We've got everybody here and we've got our guests are getting settled in, so I think we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk? Where'd you put my... the hell with my bag too? You can go up. Do it like this? Off my back there. Okay.
He has been called to order?
Okay, so we'll do a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. You can use it as you see fit. And let's see. Mrs. Loa, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please? Just come up. Just you can come up right.
Hands over your heart. Ready?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Potem Correa?
Present.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Loa?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next item is Judge? Your honor, sir. We're gonna have the ceremonial oath of office administered by the Honorable Judge Mario Barrera of Mr. Loa.
Don't get too far ahead of me, Judge.
Now, I'd like to say something before I do this. I've known Richard for many, many years. I came to the Allen Valley in 1995, and he was already here. He had a long history of community service work. He was doing community service when I first met him in 1995. He then was doing work as a defense attorney. He then was called upon by Governor Schwarzenegger to be... go to the state and be on some committees there. Again, community service, and then he came back. And now he... I see that he's now a council member again, which again shows that he has dedicated his life to community service, and I am honored to give him the oath. So, let's start. Raise your right hand. I, Richard Loa...
I, Richard Loa.
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...that I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And if I may, Your Honor, may I?
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Judge Barrera. And of course, having worked with him, he... you were in the public defender's office. I was in the alternate public defender's office. But we also came into contact when you were part of a homeowners association. And you came and made presentations in the council back then.
Yes.
So it's both on a professional level as well as being a council member, that we knew each other. I want to say that I'm privileged to have been appointed as a representative for Council District Two, the district that Mayor Hoffbauer has vacated. There are many items that we will be addressing in that district that are important and very close to my heart, as obviously that is the district that I live in. Yesterday, we did a tour, the mayor and I, of the West District, to point out physically the things that are... that are of concern to him and to me. I was very pleased to see, we went by 25th West, and Lake Elizabeth Road, that the Amargosa Creek water recharge is again being... it's actually being started. There's some ground movement there and so on. We have, as a consequence of the recession, had a vacancy factor in Palmdale among our businesses. And we want to do everything to encourage that we fill up those vacancies, including at the mall. There are park obligations that are due to the Western District that I will vigorously pursue so that those are fulfilled. And there are roadways and connectivity with our transportation system that I'll be working on as well. There's many other issues, I just want to highlight those. I want to work with the Sheriff's Department. I am part of the Boosters Club, and will be continuing to work there with the sheriffs and all other agencies. Thank you again, Judge.
All right. Thank you, and welcome aboard, Richard.
Thank you.
So we have item 5.1, presentation by the Grupo Ritual Azteca del El... All right, come on, I'm only so good at this, okay? Help me with that, will you?
So it is from the Grupo Ritual Azteca del Sur de Milagros de Palmdale.
Right, that's exactly what I was thinking. I'm sorry, I'm trying, but I just... when I get abbreviations, I just get messed up. So I'm going to ask Robert Alvarado from our Water Board if he can introduce this. He's had a few little statements, just so everybody understands what's happening here. And the folks who contacted him and he had contacted me about this and kind of helped get this going here, so, Robert?
Okay, so basically, this group ritual, Azteca del Sol, del Señor de los Milagros, is a group from Palmdale. Azteca dancers, they're representing the great country of Mexico and their heritage and their culture. And within that tradition, sorry, may I... I think that I can give more justice with what that is. And so basically, they have this ritual in Mexico and also in other Latin American countries, including mine, El Salvador, where we have dancers that perform a small ritual to bless new administrations, new presidents, new mayors, like in our case. So they approached me that they were interested in blessing, because they're all living in Palmdale. They're citizens of Palmdale, and they would like to be part of this community and to basically bless the entire administration, not just the mayor, but the entire council, and wish the entire city council of Palmdale the very best. Not only in 2019, but, you know, in other years as well. So I'd like to introduce the group director, Karina. So Karina, puede pasar adelante?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Karina Manzano. Mi grupo se llama Ritual Azteca del Señor de los Milagros, y aquí de la ciudad de Palmdale. Estamos muy agradecidos hoy y bienvenidos por hacernos la invitación y estar aquí con ustedes representando esta bella cultura y nuestra tradición. Muchas gracias a todos, yo los bendiga, estamos aquí muy contentos y a todos muchas gracias, se les Dios.
She said she's from Palmdale, and she was honored to be invited and be placed on the agenda to perform, and that she's happy to be here in honor.
Great, okay, thank you. John, were you good with your pictures? Y'all good with your pictures? Okay, all right. So, again, I'd like to thank the group and the young lady there, Robert. Please extend our sincere appreciation to the whole group, especially the young lady and the drummer, because I think he worked up a sweat, so...
That was amazing, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
Told you we're gonna do some things different, huh?
Business as usual.
Yeah. All right, so, Jesse, you're up?
He's like, how am I gonna follow that?
Poor dogs are probably nervous right at this point, huh?
That was great. Well, tonight, I have Princess. She's a five-year-old short-haired chihuahua. I think she's more of a dachshund chihuahua than pure chihuahua. But she came into our care on 25th of December, has a stray. And right now, she's very shy, and once she gets to warm up to you, she's really cuddly. I was surprised with the drums going, that she just shook a little bit, but wasn't terrified, like most dogs get, you know? The giant schnauzer over there, he just slept through most of it. But she did really well. So I'm pretty sure that she would be a great companion for, you know, older kids and... and somebody who just wants to cuddle with their dog when they get home from work. She's available, she's fixed, she's got all her shots, she's also chipped. And right now, she's living in 1401 is her temporary home right now. So if you're really looking for a cute little shy dog, this is the perfect one for you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jesse. These volunteers over there really put their heart into the program. And these little guys right here, if we don't step up, it's not good for them, okay? So we can do the right thing. We've had a number of dogs that have gotten adopted. Some of them have, you know, practically, they've had to wrestle to get the right owner as everybody was so impressed with them. So, but it's really a good thing what these folks are doing over there, these volunteers. If you want to help, go over there and see Jesse and his supervisors over there. They can help get you hooked up if you want to put some time in and help the community out and help out the little critters, right? Thank you, sir. Okay, thanks.
Take care.
High Desert Obedience Club will donate a class for whoever adopts them.
So there you go. Here you go. One-time, one-time offer here. High Desert obedience, if you adopt this little doggy, they'll give you an obedience class. Alright, thanks. Speaking of which.
We'll get you a certificate for a class.
We've got the... So High Desert Obedience Club, next item, Pet Pals. So, you know, there was an article on Spectrum, I think the AV Press ran a little thing recently, and it was called the Books and Barks Program. So you've got these kids that are getting awfully shy and they don't like the, you know, they get nervous reading and stuff like this. But these dogs, they don't judge it when you're reading. And these kids will read to them. Maybe you could tell us a little bit more and tell us who you are and a little bit about yourself.
My name is Mike Medjum, president of the High Desert Obedience Club and a member of Pet Pals, which is a subdivision of High Desert Obedience Club. The therapy dogs are dogs not like service dogs. Their job is to visit with people. And you can tell. Yeah, I goofed and said "visit." Ari, over here, heel. And anyway, Ari and I do a couple of things. We do the Books and Barks over here at the library just down the street. And we also do visits to retirement homes, the veterans' homes, twice a month. We had one Tuesday, Thursday, today, this week. And we go and visit with people. And in general, their idea is that the therapy dogs will come in and they just plan to make you feel better. Ari, over here. Who wants to go visit? Visit with him. Come here, Ari, visit. Visit. Scratch him, he'll lean right into you, don't let him knock you over. Therapy dogs can be any kind of a dog. We have represented over here. AJ has a Pembroke Welsh Corgi, and Joy has Doxins that are also therapy dogs. So we have therapy dogs as big as Newfoundland, that's 165 pounds, that's almost twice him. Ari's right about 105. But we have another group that will visit the hospitals on a pretty regular basis. We're all over the place.
I know that when I had family, other-in-law was in hospice, that would lighten her day up when they'd come in and they'd bring the dog. Yeah, he's doing is good, it's really important, and with the kids. So, tell you what, can we get the other members of your group here? We've got letters for all the folks. You guys gave us the names, we're gonna let you distribute them because it's huge. So the idea here is that, you know, this recognition is our, on behalf of the entire council. So that's why I've asked the council to join me while we're doing this here. So John, John's trying to figure this out, because I threw him a loop on his head. Thanks, you guys, appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Let me read this real fast. So this is for the High Desert Obedience Club Pals, a recognition of your participation in the Books and Barks Program. It uses the therapy dogs at the Palmdale City Library to encourage kids to read aloud. The city of Palmdale would like to thank you for making a difference in our community. So, sir, thank you so much. This is a letter, they gave us a list, and we have a letter of appreciation for each member of the group.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is gonna get boring, so you guys don't have to stay down. No, no, not you. Right, this is Engineering, Engineering Club. I follow dogs that are energy. Chuck, I know there's a number of awards that our Public Works Department and individuals have gotten. And we've got a whole stack over here. Maybe you can help us run through this and tell me what they're about.
Yeah, is it okay if I have the...
Yeah, bring whoever you want.
So at this point, I'd like to have, maybe they just go in up here.
Hello.
There's the little frog, you see? So Lynn, Lynn Glynn, who is our Capital Project Division Manager. Ben Lucha, is Ben still here? Yeah, okay, who's our Environmental Technology Division Manager. Arista Hennessy, come on up, don't be shy. And who's our engineering technician. And then Ulysses Gonzalez, he can join us up here. So, and I guess Jason wasn't able to make it. So if I could, just, if you'll indulge me just one second, I just want to say that the Public Works staff at this city, so proud to be a part of this, an honor. Dedicated and really great staff, and they are really top of things. And that's really evidenced by these awards that we got from American Public Works Association. And I'll start out with, with, I guess, maybe everybody doesn't know what American Public Works Association is. It's a national organization, there are hundreds of chapters all over the United States. And then that's broken down into branches. We are in the High Desert Branch, part of the Southern California Chapter. The Southern California Chapter has an award ceremony every year. And this happened in, I guess it was in December 13th, down at Lakewood. And there are projects that go there, and we got an award for one of those. But I'll start out with the President's Award, the President of the Chapters. And that's really San Bernardino County, Orange County, doesn't include Ventura County, but it's LA County and even Kern County. And this is, the President of that chapter has the ability to issue or to award somebody for distinguished participation in the chapter and in public works and in APWA over a longer period of time. It's sort of a career, I don't want to call it a...
Long time.
Yeah, it's a career-long achievement that's given out by the President of the Chapter. This year, I don't think we've had a, our branch hasn't had this award ever. So, and he awarded that to Lynn, Lynn Glynn, who is our Capital Projects. Lynn's name is on a lot of buildings as you walk around City Hall and in the complex. I, you know, I don't know if you want to...
Those brass plaques out front.
Yeah, I mean, she's been involved in a lot of them over...
Twenty-eight and a half years.
Twenty-eight and a half years, a lot. So she's put a lot of time and effort into making this city great, so I don't know if you want... Lynn, you want to? You don't want to say anything? She's very shy, too. She's not shy, but she is very humble and has most...
It was quite a surprise.
Yeah. And so, I guess the next thing is at the same, at that same award ceremony for the Southern California Chapter, we were awarded an award. I think you're all aware that we purchased, the city purchased the streetlights, 18,000 streetlights from Southern California Edison. And that was in an effort to sort of take over ownership of those. Edison was making a lot of money on that. And as much as anything else, this will allow us to start down the road of being smart cities. And so now, we own the streetlights. And many cities are doing this, but the award that we won for this was creative and innovative. And it was really on the process that we undertook, which most other cities didn't take. And they had to do with making sure that people weren't, their health wasn't affected, believe it or not. And I think Ben could probably, or Arista, could explain this a little bit better. But that's really, it wasn't the fact that we bought the streetlights, it was the process that we took in finding the best avenue to get to that point. So maybe Ben can say a few words.
Yeah, and so like Chuck said, a lot of cities are doing it. Unfortunate for them, but for us, it worked out that we learned from their mistakes. And there were some cities that it didn't go very well for them. And we learned from what they did, and we tried our best to reach out to the public, involve the public as much as possible, do a pilot program so people can go out and see the streetlights. And it was the engagement with the public, it was taking into consideration health, health effects that those streetlights could potentially have, making sure we were Dark Skies compliant. It was just going above and beyond to make sure that this was the best project we can provide for the city. And so it wasn't really the project, it was the process where we won the award.
I guess, you know, we don't do this in a vacuum. It's not just the Public Works Show, and I'd like to make sure that, and there were other divisions, but I think the biggest one is purchasing in the Finance Division. Karen, and your team, you guys did a great job in assisting the, this, the process of taking these over. So I want to give kudos to you guys as well. And then, I guess, the next one is the, so we go from the Southern California Chapter to the High Desert Branch. So there was an award given out for the best use of technology. And we're all standing right in the middle of that, right now. That, the award was for the City Council Chamber Upgrade. You can see the screen, all of the, you know, the council members have the benefit of, you know, some, you know, technology that, I think before it was quite a bit different. I haven't seen screens, but, so it's, it's really brought us into, into the, I guess, the 80s kind of thing. Really, but, but it was a lot of work. And Ulysses Gonzalez, I mean, the two people down here on the end, these are our rising stars in public work. So our, I don't know if you, I don't like millennials, but I guess they are. And so we're, they're great, they're really...
We're trying to learn what they sold us up here.
Yeah, that's right. So, so great job, Ulysses. And I think, you know, we have pretty, pretty, pretty seamless, for the most part, implementation. So, good job. And then last, Jason Finch was named at the branch level, the Employee of the Year. Jason is our, he's our manager in the street, or I'm sorry, in the Engineering Division, but in the, in the, I guess, Traffic Division, Traffic Section of that. And we had a big vacancy, someone left, and he really filled the spot and really went over and above. He represented, he was staffed to the NCTC and ABTA, helping out with the board members at that level, which was really way above his, I mean, he's, he was punching above his weight class, but he did a great job, and so he was named the Employee of the Year. And this is the second year in a row that Palmdale staff has gotten Employee of the Year. So hopefully I haven't taken up too much time, Mayor. I apologize, but we have a great staff.
It's important for you to know that what our team is doing here.
Yeah, so thank you for your indulgence.
We can do the same thing, if we can get you guys and we'll get, John, get some pictures here. Alright, thanks Public Works Division there and the good work that you guys are doing. I know I can read my newspaper out on any street out there right now, because it's looking really good. Okay, now I need a, I need a motion to waive the full reading of the resolutions and ordinances, please.
Second.
You get a motion, you can, you get a second?
Uh, the second was by...
Okay, so motion by Mr. Loa, Mrs. Bettencourt, is a second?
I have Laura Bettencourt and Juan Correa. That's the move and second.
I did have boys second, but Mrs. Bettencourt actually used the new system.
She, she, she used the system these guys put in, so. Alright, so, that's what we got.
We do have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Do you want to start voting?
That'd be great. Still working through a couple of these. Okay, can you mind? What's happening here? Okay, while he's working through that, while he's going through that, we'll just go ahead and do a voice vote. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor on that item?
Aye.
Any opposed, so ordered. Okay, so that was number six. Number seven. Okay, this is public comments on item number eight, the consent calendar. Number nine, appointments. If you wish to comment on the items listed above, please come forward to the podium, state the item number in the comments. There's a maximum three-minute limit that's going to be imposed for each speaker, other than staff members. And if you could fill out a speaker sheet, that would, that would help. So this is for items eight and nine. Any speakers on these items? Okay, seeing none, we have the consent calendar. Any council members have any items they would like to pull from the consent calendar for further discussion or questions?
No, I don't have anything.
Anybody? Okay, I'll be your motion lead. Mine's still not coming up here, bud.
Austin as the mover and seconded by Juan.
Okay, so while we're trying to get my machine on here. Alright, all in favor and approval of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, so ordered. Okay, we made that through that. Alright, so we're on item number nine, appointment. This is a reappointment of Helen Vallador as a Director Public Member to serve on the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority for one year, renewable term to expire January of 2020. Anybody, Helen's been there, she's been doing a good job, speaking with some of the folks over there. She's very engaged. Anybody, Mr. Bishop, you're the chairman, could I have a...
I chair that board. She does a good job, she's, her attendance is good, she's very attentive, she goes to the seminars, and she brings a lot of information. And she, I feel like she's an asset.
Okay, so based on that...
I'll go ahead and make a, no, there's, there's no second.
So I'm, I'll make the motion, according to that. And Mr. Bishop, the second again, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so I think we can vote then. See if my screen comes up this time.
So we need Richard Loa.
I thought it pressed yes.
Yeah. He's pushed it. All in favor of the items, say, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business. So we have, this is the time of year when we do the standard, routine council reorganization. Is there anybody that is not happy with... Um, is there anybody that, uh, that is not happy with the position they're on right now and wants off? Anybody that wants on something? Now's the time that we're going to do that. Um, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do we want to just go down the list here or?
We'll keep track as you move down the list and, uh, do we have any motion about every position or just?
No.
Well, I think we get to the very end and just, uh, uh, validate the, the whole group then.
Right.
So, um, does anybody have a burning interest of getting on or off the air quality management district? I'm currently on that board. Uh, I'm okay with that. That's, uh, not that much time. I know Mr. Bishop is over there. Is anybody else, uh, desperately want on the air quality management district?
I'm okay with staying on.
How about, uh, alternate, Mr. Correa?
I, I am happy to stay as an alternate.
Okay, so we'll keep it as is?
We want to keep A Q M D as is then?
I would say so.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, everybody, everybody concur? Okay, uh, so we'll look at the, um, mosquito abatement district. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Persons recently. He's, he's happy there. Does anybody want to, uh, deal with, uh, mosquitoes and vector control? This one has the, uh, end of provision to, um, maintain a, um, a, um, citizen on that board. Uh, anybody have any other ideas? If not?
No.
We'll move on.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm okay.
A B T A, uh, currently, uh, I am on there along with, uh, Mr. Correa. And, uh, I want to thank you, by the way, for stepping up. I, I know that's a long distance for you to drive in for that meeting and it's not that long of a meeting, but thank you very much. Your input's been very appreciated there.
I've really enjoyed being there. I've learned a lot. Uh, but yes, it's taking a little toll on me having to come on, uh, Tuesdays for that, uh, meeting. Uh, and I know that we have now a citizen alternate. Um, but if, uh, Mr. Loa is interested in participating, uh, or, or Ms. Bettencourt on A B T A, uh, as long as we have the coal rush needed to, to represent our city.
I'd like to be a delegate on there.
You want to do that one?
Okay, do I do that?
Okay.
Okay, so, um, again, that's, uh, that, that, that's, that's one that I actually kind of enjoy. Anybody else, anybody want to bump me on that or are we all good for that otherwise?
I'm good. We just stay there representing us.
All right, all right, we'll move on then. So, uh, let's, uh, the, the change on that will be a second delegate will be, uh, Mr. Loa. I'm not sure how long it's take the county to get through all the rigmarole and get that citizen alternate. Uh, contract cities right now, uh, that's probably a quarterly meeting. Um, uh, Ms. Bettencourt is the alternate on there. I think anyone can also be an alternate. Anybody else want to be a designated person on that or how do you want to, any change? Anybody wants to, uh, do on, on contract cities?
Is Ms. Bettencourt, uh, going forward with that appointment or?
Yes.
Okay.
So you want to stay as, uh, alternate on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody, uh, anybody else have any other ideas on that?
No.
And so we'll move on to the audit committee right now. That's, uh, audit committee currently is myself and, uh, Ms. Bettencourt on that one. Um, and, uh, with the alternate as, uh, Mr. Correa. Uh, anybody, um, have any other ideas on how we want to organize that one there? I noticed I had, uh, Mr. Bishop has thrown his, uh, threw his name in the hat.
It can be an alternate or a, a delegate, whichever, or at least an alternate if it's, uh, difficult for Mr. Correa to make those meetings.
Usually these are towards the end of the day.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, but, uh, you guys tell me what you want to do here, you know, it's, uh, we meet usually, um, about twice a year on that, usually when we have the cappers come up, you know?
If you guys are happy where you're at, um, that's fine. If, if either one of you felt like you wanted to get off, I would be happy to take that place.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine too.
Okay.
All right, um, I'll tell you what, I'll let you have that one as a, as a delegate on that, okay?
Okay.
So it's, it's not a lot of time, but it's just, it's, it's like one more thing, right? So the investment board, so we have a, uh, a, a city ordinance that has me on that. Um, currently, uh, Mr. Correa is on that. Uh, somebody, uh, is, uh, needs to rotate onto the, uh, investment committee. Um, anybody want to take a stab at the investment committee? That meets what, uh, once or twice a year, sir?
Yes, twice a year.
Twice a year for the investment committee, reviewing the investment, uh, um, material and stuff like that.
Does council member Correa remain?
I cannot be there, uh, per the, uh, bylaws, I guess, of the resolution.
Right, I can step up.
You can step up, okay.
Okay, so we'll show, uh, Mr. Loa as the, uh, second member on that, Becky?
Okay.
Okay, um, so we have the high desert corridor. Um, right now, um, I'm the director on that and, uh, Mr. Bishop is the alternate. Uh, we just got those affirmed by the county. I don't know, do we want to start messing with that and jumping through the hoops again with the county all over again?
I, I'm good on that.
Yeah, this is a committee that's probably going to get pretty busy over the next year or two, so.
With still two meetings per year.
Well, this, that's been meeting a lot more.
With, with bright line and so forth, I think we're going to see a lot more happening.
Okay.
Are they only going to have one alternate for that still? Or can, can you have more than one alternate?
Well, we, we also have the provision, what we have to, if you want to have another alternate on there, we can submit it to the county. The county has to jump through their process to do that, but any one of these, it takes a couple of months before we can get on the agenda with the county. So this is something we put into the county about four months ago, so. All right, we'll leave that as, as is then. Um, League of Cities, um, I'm currently there. I am, um, I probably ought to stay as the delegate on that only because I just got, um, the, uh, state league director's position. And I'm on, uh, legislative committee and stuff over there. Um, and, uh, Mr. Bishop is an alternate. Uh, does anybody else want, uh, this is another one where we can have more than one alternate? Do you want to stay on as an alternate?
Um, I'm okay. If there's somebody else that wants to take that spot, I'm okay with that as well.
Richard, I saw you waving your hand there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so do you want to, want to jump in on that one then?
Sure.
All right, do you want to give that spot up or do you want to stay two delegates on that or how do you want to do that?
Um, it did, two delegates, two delegates is good because if he can't make it.
Uh, anything, uh, a, a second alternate?
Yeah, a second.
Is that going to work, Mr., uh, Priti?
Yeah, I think that'll work and especially the meetings for Desert Mountain Division are on Fridays. And they range from as far as Mammoth Lakes to Twenty Nine Palms to Barstow. And so.
Carpool, carpool.
Yeah, so sometimes it's out of the reach of, of some of us.
Okay, so, um, Becky, you get that then, so, so.
Second alternate, Loa.
So, yeah, the, the, yeah, our ordinance allows anybody being an alternate, but both of them want to be listed. So I guess Mr. Bishop is alternate one and, uh, Mr. Loa is alternate two.
Yes.
You do that? Is that good? And, and now those meetings are open to everybody, by the way, so feel free. We're going to have it in February is going to be the one up here. So I would encourage everyone to, uh, to attend.
I would also suggest carpool, but it's here, huh?
Yeah, we can, yeah, plenty of carpool here, so. So the next one is LA County Sanitation. This is one of those again where by code, um, it's me on, it, on both of those and I need, I need a second delegate for the Palmdale, uh, sanitation district. Um, did, see, who, who, who wanted to be on sanitation district?
I think I put it, I think I was interested in it.
So I think, I, I think you're listed as alternate. What we need to do is we need to make sure that we keep an alternate for both of those. We need two delegates on the, on the sanitation district for Palmdale. And then we need an alternate for both of them. So we need to fill the vacancy first for the Palmdale one. But we have to keep in mind that we have to have an alternate for both of those positions, so.
So did I mark that? I thought I did.
Okay, oh, yeah. Do you want to stay as alternate on both of those, Mr. Bishop?
That's fine.
Okay, you want to be the alternate and then Mr. Loa, it was indicating, I think, that he wanted to be the second person for the Palmdale sanitation then?
Okay.
Is that, anybody else have any other ideas on that? All right, so Becky, that, was that clear?
Yes.
All right, N C T C, um, so what I would like to do here is, um, uh, I would like to ask, uh, uh, it's kind of an awkward spot, but at the time we were juggling and we just put this together and we put, um, our community representative at large, we appointed, uh, Mr. Priti. Uh, but on N C T C, uh, we need to have, um, we need to have, um, uh, another member on that to replace, um, I, I think would be just a more comfortable situation if Mr. Priti wouldn't find himself having to vote against us.
I'd be happy to have the shortest term on the N T C T C ever, one meeting.
So right now it's, uh, myself, um, with the, uh, alternate is Mr. Correa.
What does it meet?
Uh, that meets, uh, as, as necessary, probably about quarterly right now, every couple of months.
Yeah, it's typically on Mondays and they do poll to see, uh, how many are available for those Mondays, uh, with the county offices and so forth. It's a huge, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock on Mondays.
And that's coming up on the fifteen, next Monday?
Yeah.
Yes.
So right now we've got, uh, myself, Correa and Bishop, um.
But I'm the alternate.
You, yes, correct, yes, sir, you're the alternate.
So can there be three council members?
Uh, yes, because it's another agency, so you absolutely can, yeah. We went through, we jumped through all these hoops before on getting the designations on that.
You showed some interest that you.
Well, I just, it, it's during the day?
Yes, ten o'clock on Mondays.
And where's that?
At whatever, wherever.
It could be.
They rotate it around. Sometimes it's up here, sometimes it's down there.
That, that won't work, I'm sorry.
Mr. Loa, I think that defaults to you.
I'll take it.
All right, there you go. By default, Mr. Loa, so, all right. All right, um, now we have, we have, uh, a vacancy or two over at, uh, T P A A, uh, but, um, I, I'd like to get some recommendations perhaps, have, uh, see if the, uh, uh, the board over there, they've got a number of people that participate on a regular basis. Uh, and they've indicated, uh, that they have some interest in, um, maybe, um, suggesting somebody for this spot. Um, and, uh, also with, uh, with some of the, uh, uh, the potential issues that come up with, uh, council members and, and the, um, incompatible office, um, seat with the, like a school board seat would be. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to see, like to have, uh, the, uh, the board over there, um, toss us over a couple of names. Couple of them already approached me and they really like that idea. Just a couple of folks on the, uh, on the school board have independently approached me on this one. So if you guys are okay with that, it's been, it's been vacant for a short time now. I think if we brought this back next month and if we could ask the, uh, T P A A board to give us something. Anybody else have any other ideas on that one?
There's only one.
Bring it back to us and we look at their list and we could, we could add or subtract for that and make that appointment, so.
Yeah, there's, there's only one vacancy at this time. There'll be another one, um, in July by Mr. Peterson. He would have served his second consecutive term. Um, maybe doing an application process, just like, uh, we did, um, for the last two appointments. I think that that's the way that we should address that for consistency purposes. Otherwise we would be having three different ways to appoint, uh, members to the T P A A.
Can we, can we have, uh, could we have the, them, um, um, give us the recommendation and then have those people, uh, that are interested then provide those applications to us?
Where can it be open to the public?
Well, I think, I think it could be, but I think that, I think that that board's got to work with those people. I think they're going to kind of have an idea about who's out there and might be interested, so. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're tapping people that have that, have that interest in.
As you recall, there's no shortage of people that were interested. At the last time we held applications, there was more than qualified people to choose from. It was quite a difficult decision from what I remember.
We can, we can do an application process and maybe get some feedback from them before we bring it to the council.
Okay, yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Does that, does that sound good? Is that good? All right, we'll go ahead. So we'll hold off on that one and, uh, and then, uh, Becky, then whatever you need to do.
So, um, so I'm clear. You want to go ahead and open the recruitment and with getting suggestions as well from?
Yes, yeah, I think that, yeah. Okay, Recycled Water Authority, the chairman right now is Mr. Bishop and the second, uh, member over there is, um, Mr. Correa. And, uh, I am an alternate on that.
So we have two people on the water board, recycled water board, two directors?
Yes.
Yeah, two directors and alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, and they both go to all the meetings? I think we, didn't we just?
We don't appoint to that. They appoint, they appoint their people, we appoint our people.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just didn't realize we had two directors.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um.
I'd like to stay on that board. It's really, um, something that I really like to keep on doing.
I know there's got some important stuff going. Mr. Bishop, what's your, what's your?
Uh, same. I'm, uh, like to stay on it and continue pushing forward with what we're working on.
Okay, anybody want the alternate seat on that?
I'll take the alternate. I used to be on it before, so.
Okay.
I was on it before, so yeah, I'll take that one as the alternate.
And that generally meets in the evening, so that won't conflict with your stuff. Uh, Becky, you got that one? Okay, all right, SCAG, uh, there's no, um, there's no alternate position for that. That is a position that the, uh, N C T C, based on the input from the councils, makes that appointment. Uh, there, we currently have three spots over there, um, and we're, um, we're trying to flesh all those out. Right now, uh, Mr. Correa is appointed to, uh, C E H D, Community Economic and Human Development. Basically, um, that tends to be more housing than anything else. Uh, Mr. Bishop is on, um, transportation right now. And, uh, there seems to be some confusion because, uh, at N C T C, we went and appointed somebody from the outside of our district on that. So we're trying to get that clarified. Um, so we're working, we're working on that. Uh, I think, uh, technically that has to be someone from District Forty Three from our district because that's our seat there. So, um, I think we'll be able to solve that other issue with the member from the other district. I think we found a solution for that. Uh, would, um, someone else be interested in serving on, uh, there's a number of committees there, transportation, um, community economic development, environmental and several of the other ones. If they'd be interested in serving on, on SCAG, that meets, uh, once a month on Thursdays. Um, and, uh, uh, the committees generally meet from about ten to twelve downtown. Uh, sometimes we'll carpool down to that. But, uh, is anybody else interested and we can flesh out the exact committees on that as it goes. You don't have to decide that right here, um, but, uh, we need to submit those to SCAG and through N C T C.
So it's not a delegate nor an alternate, it's, uh, being on a committee.
These are the committees, the state committees. Would you want to be considered for one of those?
Yeah, I'd like to be considered.
You, we can sit down, we can go over those and with, maybe with Behan, who understands the committees and, uh, and the city manager and get you dialed in on that. All right, uh, almost there. Um, U S Mexico Sister Cities Association. Um, so this is one that's open to everybody. Uh, I would, I would really encourage everybody to stop in from time to time. Uh, the, uh, that's a, that's a great group. Uh, anybody want their name off this list? No?
No, I'll stay.
So anybody else want to have their name officially on this? Because you can put as many delegates on this as you like, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'll be a delegate on it.
Okay. Did, did you all want to be listed on that? I know sometimes you were attending.
When, when is it?
It's evenings. I think it's like, uh, every other Tuesday or something like that.
Second for Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, yeah, so.
If you want that more.
I'm going to have to wait and see what nights I have me teaching. I usually teach Wednesday or Thursday.
Well, it's open to everybody. You don't have to necessarily be appointed by us. You go in there and you can pay the.
Oh, you're saying as a member, um, but we have two delegates. Anybody else would be an alternate?
Okay, all right, but you can be, you can be a member of the group just by going in there and, uh, there's a forty five bucks here or something like that.
It's five dollars a meeting.
Something like that, yes, it's cheap. It's, it's a real good group. All right, the State Prison Advisory Board, um, Ms. Bettencourt is on that. That meets on a, uh, on an afternoon, um, quarterly or something like that, every other month. Uh, we need an alternate on the prison board. So, um, looking here, I think Mr. Loa has, uh, initials on that one.
I did. What does it entail, Ms. Bettencourt?
Excuse me?
What is it, what is it involved?
Don't wear jeans.
Don't wear jeans, don't wear blue shirts, right?
You can ask Austin about that. Um, we, we meet and, uh, we meet with the warden and the staff there and go with programs, progresses, um, but they have their problems.
Okay, and when, when does it meet?
Uh, the third Wednesday of the month.
Is it at three o'clock or something like that?
About three P M.
End of the day?
I'll, I'll be happy to work with you on that.
Is the alternate on that? And the alternates are, by the way, alternates always encouraged to participate and attend. Because that way you stay up to speed on any of these committees.
Just let them know you're coming.
Yeah, you have to get you on this.
And don't wear jeans of any kind. They're denim.
Just can't walk in there.
All right, any questions on those, uh, Madam City Clerk?
Um, no, I, I think we got them all.
Okay, all right.
Comments, speak?
Uh, any, uh, any public comments on those, on those, uh, many appointments? See, and then moving down to ten point two. So this is discussion and action regarding mayor pro temp appointment. Um, so, uh.
You know, I just want to say that I really enjoyed being the mayor pro temp, uh, this year. Uh, thank you, uh, for letting me be, nominating me the mayor pro temp. Uh, it's been a great, uh, experience. I recommend it. And I mean, that's their ordinance to allow everybody to have a turn. That's what the, um.
No, that's not the ordinance. That's the ordinance you changed.
All right.
Good, okay.
Well, nevertheless, nevertheless, I do appreciate the fact that, I know you didn't get a lot of uh particular action in there uh just because of the dynamics, but uh that's one of the things I'm looking to do is to uh, is to um uh with all the stuff that's going on, all the boards and committees that I'm on, um I know that it, I'm gonna be relying on that position uh quite a bit more and uh I really believe it's more than just coming in and handling this uh, this meeting uh uh if um I happen to be off sick late on vacation or boycott the meeting, so. Uh so um anybody uh, anybody have any thoughts on this particular issue? Um I think it's, I think we have to have somebody that's uh, that's um gonna be uh, be able to uh step up and kinda. I know it's, it's difficult sometimes with, with your distance and stuff like that, and I know Ms. Betancourt has uh work commitments, we all have work commitments.
Well, I'd be willing to step up and fill that role.
So. Any, anybody else have any other uh thoughts on that? I'll take that as a motion, I'll, I'll make that as a motion then and uh I'll look for a second.
I'll second, but it's not working.
Alright, well.
Did you get a second, Becky?
He's a, he's pushing a button, but it's not, it's not responding.
I see, yeah, the secondary isn't coming up.
I'm gonna start that again, huh? While he's doing that, signing it back in. Um any additional uh public comments on ten point two?
I'd just like to say that I still think that we need to go back to the rotation instead of having uh, it be a group selection. I think that's fair. And I think the, the ordinance that you had was, was fair for everyone on the council. And so I think that it should be returned to the original ordinance.
No, I, actually, that wasn't the original ordinance, the original ordinance was what we're, we were managing it now, so. Nothing gonna work or not work there.
I'm gonna go ahead and do it on this end, on the previous ordinance then. So we have um Steve Hoffbauer as the mover and second by Richard Loa to appoint um Bishop as the council member, Bishop as the mayor pro temp.
Alright.
So go ahead and start voting.
So we, she's got that on there now? Oh, there it is, there's the voting thing's come, okay, so go ahead and show your votes then.
So we need a vote by Richard Loa.
Can everybody push a button there? This isn't working, all in favor of the uh motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, any abstentions? Motion carries four to one. Okay, public hearing, this is uh item eleven point one, um staff to read the ordinance, uh number fifteen fifteen, Mister Heffernan.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mayor, uh good evening, Mayor, members of the Palmdale City Council, tonight, uh the item before you tonight is approval of ordinance number one fif- uh fifteen fifteen. I'll read the ordinance, ordinance number fifteen fifteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale to amend municipal code section eight point zero four, point one zero zero by adding and adopting County of Los Angeles ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero zero three seven, which implements revisions to state law governing onsite wastewater treatment systems.
Okay, so uh we need a voice vote to introduce ordinance number fifteen fifteen, do I have a motion please?
Second.
Okay, so I'll push a button, so uh.
Let's have a voice vote.
This is just a voice vote on this one? Okay, so Mister Corio, we had a second by.
Mister Loa, I believe.
Mister Bishop to uh introduce the ordinance, uh all in favor on this item, you don't need to push a button, this is a voice vote only, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or um, it will open a public hearing on this item. Uh basically, uh you wanted to uh uh just give us the Reader's Digest version of what this will do.
Sure, absolutely. Uh the State Water Resource Control Board has the authority over onsite wastewater treatment systems, which are septic systems installed on separate parcels. Uh it, those parcels that are unable to connect to a municipal water, uh sewer system, wastewater system. Uh the onsite wa- wastewater treatment capture and treat wastewater to reduce the effect on the environment. Uh the State Water Resource Control Board promulgated an onsite uh wastewater treatment system policy that provides minimum site uh design standards and uh they allowed the um individual agencies to come up with their own policies that would meet the standards of the state, but might be a little more adaptable to the individual agencies. This was done by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and they adopted ordinance that would implement a local agency management plan that was then approved by the state. That local agency management plan had uh requirements that were more adaptable to the situation in La- Los Angeles County. Um those requirements, as I said, were approved by the state. Uh ordinance number fifteen fifteen will revise the Palmdale Municipal Code uh and it will incorporate County Ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirty-seven. And that action will keep the city of Palmdale in compliance with state law as it relates to onsite wastewater treatment systems. The MOU, which you approved earlier, will give the city manager authority to sign the uh uh memorandum of understanding, which actually allows the county on our behalf to per- well, we do the permitting, but they do the approval process. An applicant would take that directly to the county process for approval, come back to us for the permit. And then they would assist us with the actual implementation and management of that uh, of those systems. So staff recommends the city council approve ordinance fifteen fifteen of the city of Palmdale to amend the code, Municipal Code eight oh four one hundred by adding and adopting County of Los Angeles ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero zero three seven. And I'm here for any question you might have.
Anybody that uh, any uh?
I think that you stated that the MOU, as it was approved, will remain as is once it goes through the LA County process. Um the MOU as presented and approved earlier tonight uh will remain as it was presented. Uh are there any chances that that MOU may change after it goes through the LA County process?
No, the count, the, the MOU as it's presented in the staff report, that is this, that is the MOU that was presented to us. And in other cities, uh similar cities like Astor, LA County, by LA County.
Perfect.
So that's been negotiated, there were some things that we wanted to change, you know, that if it app, if it was applicable. Um and so we've made several minor changes, all those changes are incorporated in the one that's in the staff report. So there won't be any, any real changes.
Any other votes of meaning on this? Okay, so uh I'll need a uh, I'll need a actual motion.
Well, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, uh public hearing, open a public hearing and receive any testimony relative to this item. Any member of the public wishing to speak now would be the time. There you go, nobody wants to talk about sewers, huh? Imagine that, I know you feel bad about that, Chuck, but it's a dirty job.
It's a dirty job, it is.
Alright, so we'll um, we'll close the public hearing, uh and any, any opposition to close the public hearing? So we're, uh staff recommendations to board this number fifteen fifteen, uh need a motion on the item then?
Move to approve.
We, we are having trouble with the voting system, so I could go ahead and um call, since this is a ordinance, um we can do a uh voice vote.
Okay, alright, so um um we need, we need a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, you have that, Mister Loa and Mister Corio?
Yes.
Okay, and um all in, all in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries. You got that? Great, alright, we're gonna go to eleven point two, um this is from uh city attorney uh D'Zazy, while uh you're on, sir. Oh, there you are.
Uh good evening, Mister Mayor, members of the city council, I, I'd like to respectfully request that this item be continued to a future council meeting. Um after this item was posted on the agenda, I got some good feedback from staff on ways to improve the ordinance. Um and there's a little tinkering I'd like to do with regarding to taxi metering, so.
Okay, was there anybody here on the taxi metering or the taxi ordinance at all that wanted to speak on this issue? Alright, seeing none, uh we just uh continue this item to a date uncertain to be reposted?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, any opposition? Nope, no, everybody, okay, okay, so we're then. Alright, so we're gonna go down to uh item twelve, non-agenda items, public comments. As fortunate as the agenda is for uh, uh any individual to uh, the opportunity to address the council on any item regarding city business that's not on the agenda, uh under state legislation, no action can be taken uh on the items uh not specifically referenced on the agenda. Uh please note, the three minute time limit may be imposed on each speaker other than staff members. Um anybody want to uh, it probably took longer to say that than. And here comes the public. So if you didn't fill out a sheet, if you could just do that later so that she, make sure she keeps the record here, just state your name on it?
My name is Marsha Furman and I live in, on Carroll Side.
Okay.
Mine is just a clarification question, um I have the agenda for today and at the end of the uh bit, um after all the, the meetings is up, it's number fifteen, says that we're gonna adjourn to February nineteenth.
Fix that, that's incorrect, that was a typo.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
Uh Madam City Clerk, the uh correct date that that should be?
That should be February fifth.
That will be February fifth.
Okay.
I apologize for that, we just didn't get time to.
That's, I, I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to say that um in um, on January eighteenth, I attended, I guess what is called the second council meeting um of the month that we um, that y'all had, uh I'm uh in, oh, you're absolutely correct, thank you for the correction. Um this is something that I think I probably have heard in the meetings that these were happening, but I didn't really know they were happening. So um I did look back on the um archives of the meetings and it seems like uh there weren't that many that actually came to um, uh that actually took place, they were on a schedule, but they didn't happen. And the few that I saw, uh maybe were kind of um, I guess I would call it non-citizen issues, you know, some kind of report or whatever, but the particular one I went to on December eighteenth dealt with illegal dumping and um safe and sane fireworks and illegal fireworks. Now, these is, are issues that are important to our citizens and come up quite frequently uh throughout the year. Um something like that, I think, is uh real important to discuss in the light of um of, of day, so to speak, maybe in a regular council meeting or one that is very well publicized that it's gonna take part, it just really is a hot issue um for a lot of people. Uh and then what, I was fortunate enough to find out about it and come, and there were a few people here. But um looking back on the archives of other possible meetings, uh the low uh, um I don't wanna say, them not coming about as often as they are on the schedule and all of a sudden this um, these very important issues um coming to light in that second council meeting. Maybe next time, maybe, I would like to see a little more out there in the, for the public, just what's going on.
That's great, I mean, if you, if you can think of something else we can be doing, because I know the city clerk posted, John puts it out on the Twitter feed, he puts it on the Facebook page, uh they put it on the city website, uh these are regular.
Well, I did.
And just, and just so you know, we've been having those second meetings in a month for two years now.
Well, no, absolutely, no, I know, I have heard of, I've heard, yeah.
We make a point of scheduling them so that we can focus on one or two topics, but it's gonna take up a lot of time without the ceremonial stuff and other, other business to get in the way, so we can dive right into it. So um, but if you've got some other ideas, John's the guy really to talk to on that, to kinda figure out what else can we do to make sure the public knows about this, because we kinda did talk about this was coming up, so that's good stuff.
I found out on Facebook, which was, you know, it was just something that was shared and I just clicked on it and boom, there it was. And I did notice that this meeting was on Facebook, um I don't know if it was the city that posted it, you know, it was the emblem and and then it took me right to, you know, the city council agenda, which that's the first time I'd ever seen that, so that was, because I'm always going, you know, through the front door and everything, to, to get, to find out what the agenda is. So that was real community, and that was on Facebook, that's all I do is Facebook. So um, so that was a new addition, and I thought, wow, that's pretty cool, it just took me right to it, so that was good.
Oh, John, John's trying to update a little bit, if you have any other ideas on that?
But maybe something, you know, of course, we don't always have a really good attendance, council meetings, but you know, just a reminder, even at the bottom, the next meeting, regularly monthly one is this date and the secondary one, you know, I know maybe you don't always meet, but at least put it that you're, the possibility is there. Be sure to check our website to see if something's happening or something.
Actually, when we adjourn the meeting, we always adjourn to the next time we're gonna meet. If that's gonna be the special meeting, we do that and we'll generally tell, say, we're gonna adjourn to, like when we adjourned to the December one, it was um, we're gonna adjourn to that and these are gonna be the topics for that, because that's a workshop meeting, and again, the whole purpose of it is it, it's a, it's.
But I agree with Marsha, a lot of people don't wait until the very adjournment to find out when the.
Right, and, and you know, it just kinda, it's not a regular out in your face kind of meeting, so it's some, it just goes, I mean, I'm pretty interested, you know, and just go right over my head, you know, not, anyway, um but uh, and also just, I know this only happens twice a year. But so now this, this um meeting has start, this council meeting was now the second, the second uh Tuesday. So now is the second Monday gonna be the fourth, or is it gonna be the third?
Good, because of holidays and it's.
Well, no, I know why it is, but does that adjust?
The workshops, yeah, I feel indulging for a second.
Yeah, there you go.
The workshops are the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so.
That's what they've been, so it's been first and third Tuesdays for a couple of years. Um just real quick, the next workshop, the, on uh the January workshop, we actually covered that at a council meeting on the energy issues, so that one's gonna be canceled unless I find something new to put in there.
Okay.
The February workshop will be on the budget, then March, that's February nineteenth, March nineteenth is the Arts Master Plan. April sixteenth is the first meeting in regard to the general plan update, a workshop on that. Uh May twenty-first will be another workshop on the budget, uh if we need it. And June eighteenth will be a workshop on the Airport Master Plan. And then we're gonna be dark in July and then August twentieth, uh our Transit Oriented Development Master Plan. And so that's what we've got planned out.
See, that's, that's great, you know, maybe uh that's something that, that John could, you know, a- tentative, like schedule, just put tentative. You know, be sure to check back, you know, that something happened, but at least it, it, you know, brings us uh to the, you know, focus, I mean, so we can see the words written, you know, just, you know, just do it at the beginning of the year, um these are what's scheduled, because those are, some of those subjects are pretty um.
That's why we dedicate a couple hours to them, instead of a business meeting with preemptive comments.
And I'm not saying a lot of people will show up, but they should have the opportunity to show up.
Now, Marsha, Marsha made a good point and I learned about a couple of them now myself, so we get it, we're gonna fix it, thanks.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Thanks very much, anybody else? Okay, make sure you give your name and if you can fill out the speaker slip, so she's got it for the record then, they're in the back of the room, okay?
Okay, um hi, my name is Caitlin Baldwin and I'm a political science student at Antelope Valley College. One of my assignments was to come to this meeting and ask some questions, so um one of my questions was.
So let me help you with that, okay? It gets awkward to get into these types of uh, the, the dialogue. We probably pushed it to the limit that the city attorney was gonna let us with this last one, okay? So I'll tell you what you can do, okay? When is your assignment due?
Um it's due at the end of the month.
At the end of the month, okay? So between now and the end of the month and uh I, my schedule is crazy, but it's open. So I would like you to uh talk to the city clerk over here and she'll give you my card and you can call over to City Hall and we can sit down and you can talk to each one of us and we can um, we can have a dialogue back and forth. Uh is there a particular topic that you might hit on?
Oh, no, it was just a general question of like.
Who's your instructor?
Amica's?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
She has to be reminded that this is a public comment, not a public question. You're allowed to say something, but you can't ask something.
So, but you know what, um uh if you, we rea- and, and on, and on its nerve wracking, and this is probably the first thing you've gotten up here and you're going, oh my god, he's yelling at me, so we're not yelling at you, we appreciate what you're doing and uh, and I was a merit badge counselor, so I get it. But here's what we can do, you can sit down and you can call City Hall and any one of us and, and I will gladly, I'll meet you, you know, if, if that's what's gonna work and uh we'll sit down and we can have a dialogue on this stuff and probably spend a lot more time on it and that little timer over there is gonna give you, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so uh can um, can somebody make sure she's got her number over there?
I thought it was her name.
Okay.
Her number here, so.
So we will set that up, okay?
Okay.
And then uh, and then if you, especially if you email the questions, we can try to get some answers for you ahead of time too, how's that sound? Is that good? Thanks very much, and she's a, she's a good lady, I enjoy uh, I enjoy her students coming to cla-. That good? Thanks very much. And she's a, she's a good lady. I enjoy, uh, I enjoy her students coming to cla- to, uh, from her class coming here.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Elva Arias and I too am a student at ABC. And now that I know that I'm not supposed to ask a question, I just wanna say.
Well, you can ask him, but we just really can't get into it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, I'd just like to say, uh, well, I've never been to a council meeting and, um, it was pretty much hard to understand what's going on cause I'm a, I'm new at Palmdale. I came from LA, um, but I actually.
Don't, don't gauge it on that, trust me, so.
But I mean, uh, uh, with this class and, um, with this first attendance, I actually look forward to, you know, attending another meeting and see, you know, get a better perspective of what Palmdale is, you know, what this city is like, cause I've only been here a month.
Well, I tell you what, it's, it's different here than it is in other areas.
Yes, it is.
And that's, that's why we're sticking around, so. But if you, if, did you give your?
I have her name.
So, she'll, we'll get in touch and we'll make a point, okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If you shoot off an email too, we can try to make sure we've got the answers instead of just pulling it out of our ears, alright?
Okay, that's cool. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Welcome to Palmdale.
Thanks, yeah.
If you really wanna get involved, we have a Partners Academy you can sign up for. It teaches, yeah, it teaches you all about the city.
Mike?
And Mike in the back will tell you all about it.
Mike knows all about that, right?
There's where I know.
Yep.
I have you, I have you, so I'll send you an email.
Anybody else wanna, anybody else wanna give it a shot? I think we pretty much, uh, maxed it out. Alright, um, so, one of the things I asked the city clerk to do and the city manager was to, to list these different boards, cause it seems like sometimes we skip them and there was a meeting and we forget about it then afterwards. Then you're stuck with having to submit a, a report to the city clerk, but then nobody heard about it, so. Why don't we just go ahead and, uh, go down the list here, these are the different boards and commissions that were on. If they didn't meet, just say we didn't meet. If you didn't go, I didn't go.
Should we be adding the cannabis board to that?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, we'll add that as a ad hoc committee and that's a great idea. Thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Bishop, I think you were at that last meeting. I've got a couple of notes, but would you like to, uh, speak on the, uh, AQMD?
Uh, yeah. AV AQMD, um, we awarded more, uh, more money to local businesses to get rid of their old diesel projects, uh, cars and, and stuff like that. We're cleaning up there. Uh, we also talked about, um, having a, uh, a local air quality expo and, uh, I don't think, do we award a lot that last meeting?
Yeah, so, so, I'll, I'll bill you in a minute.
Okay.
Um, so, hang onto your, hang onto your seats here, ladies and gentlemen. We awarded eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars in grants to local businesses for vehicles and equipment. Uh, um, for example, uh, the AV Schools Transportation, uh, Authority, um, to a, uh, to a landscaping company, to, uh, High Desert Dairy, um, to Periclee High School. If you've got old, dirty equipment, let's get it replaced. There's money out there. AQMD is, responsibility is to help clean up the air and enforce it, but we also funnel those monies through. And, uh, anything else you wanna add, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, no, I know we have a lot more prod, uh, projects that, uh, other applicants have ex- uh, expressed entrance, uh, interest for. And one of the big ones that we have, uh, success this year with and that we're trying to get more info on is the rebate program. We had a, a lot of people come in that bought electric cars or hybrid cars and that were getting, uh, rebate back not only from the state and the, and the federal government, but from our local air quality board as well, up to thousand or fifteen hundred dollars for a purchase of one of those vehicles within the Antelope Valley. Um, and that includes a Tesla. You still are eligible for that rebate, even though we don't have a Tesla dealer here. We did work through that. But, uh, our next meeting, we're gonna get the numbers back of how many rebates we were able to give out to those cars purchased and have a, have a solid number of how many, uh, people are moving over to a, a car that uses less gas and, and leaves our air a little cleaner.
Correct. So, um, lawn mowers, we're gonna, we're gonna even work hard or we're looking to try to get a program together here where we have at a, at an event, have this bunch of lawn mowers out there and you bring your own lawnmower in, as long as it starts, you, you can swap it out for very little money and you can get yourself a brand new electric mower and they're great, let me tell you.
Yeah, it's the EGO brand.
Yeah.
I think you can see them at Lowe's or Home Depot. It's, it's a substantial rebate and it's, it's high-quality equipment. It's, comes with good batteries and you can, uh, you can get a pretty good-sized yard done on a single charge, so it's, it's, uh, it's not cheap equipment.
Wanna talk on Transit Authority? Did we have a meeting that was, it was, um?
I thought that it was canceled because of the holidays. Well, there's the, the activities, half of ours, but the actual meeting, I think, because of the holidays. Cause it meets on the third or fourth, uh, Tuesday, but because of the holidays, I think it was canceled.
Okay, Contract Cities, uh, we just had some legislative, uh, prep work. They're up there right now, so I'm missing that legislative meeting up there, Sacramento. So, uh, I'll get some feedback and, uh, give that to you guys. Audit Committee, uh, was not, we did not meet this month. Investment Committee, there was, uh, no meeting was there? Investment folks?
No.
And that's its last council meeting.
High Desert Corridors, that was also dark this past, uh, uh, no, we, we had a, um, uh, we had the, uh,
Phone meeting.
We had the, uh, we had a phone meeting and, uh, um, did you wanna, uh, help us out on that one on the, what were we working on on High Desert Corridor? What was the, uh, that was the, uh?
Working on the private activity bond?
Right, that's right. So that's one where, um, where we, um, we made the recommendation for, um, the one billion in private equity bonds, uh, for the Brightline Virgin Trains Program. And, uh, you'll stand by, you'll hear more on that. Uh, League of Cities, uh, we didn't have a meeting this past month, but we have a meeting on February eighteenth, is it, Mr. Furtin?
I know it's a Friday, I'm not gonna tell you.
Yeah, it's gotta, I believe it's February eighteenth. We'll advise the rest of the council. Our, uh, local representatives will, should all be here and/or their, their rep. And, uh, we'll probably have it maybe to Cultural Center or maybe Legacy Commons, but we'll be the host and we'll have, this is the time for all those guys from Mammoth all the way out to Twenty-Nine Palms to come to Palmdale, so.
Good, good.
So, uh, Sanitation District, um, I don't, uh, I don't believe we had a sanitation district meeting. I think it was dark this month.
I think it was dark.
Yeah, it was dark this month as well. Um, NCTC, we're, we're not meeting till next month. Recycle Water, sir?
Uh, I think that meeting was dark as well.
Yeah, December is a late month.
Yeah.
And, um, Southern California Association of Governments, uh, the, um, we had the, uh, Economic Summit down in LA in lieu of a, uh, board meeting, uh, and, uh, that was just, uh, we're going over with a lot of the, um, the, uh, economic gurus about what's going on in the, in the region and what's happening nationwide that's impacting the region. And, uh, so the reports are, are all there on the SCAG website. Very informative. If you're having trouble sleeping, that's one of them to pick up. Okay, uh, did we have any, uh, the, um, um, we didn't have Sister Cities. I think they just had their Christmas party and then, uh, the Prison Committee, yeah?
Dark.
It was dark this month? Okay, so those are dark months. Okay, uh, Cannabis Committee, we did not meet last month, but we got one coming up in, is it a week or two? It's on the city website. I think it's next week, isn't it?
Fifteen?
Uh, yeah, so if anybody's interested in Cannabis Committee, uh, so we'll have some, uh, that should be some spirited dialogue at that meeting cause that's where we're gonna be start opening it up to our, uh, committee members to start, uh, going through some other things.
And just a, just a question of that, can other council members attend, uh, as long as they don't participate?
Um, I think, I think we've had an issue with that.
Yeah, Cannabis.
Mr. Decezi, on, uh, on the, uh, ad hoc committee, uh, we have two council members on that. It's a notice meeting. How does that work then, uh, if a third council member shows up?
They, well, they can't be on the committee.
Oh, but the public.
They really shouldn't be making any comments. They can sit and listen.
Is it a public meeting or is it chairs of members of the committee?
Public meeting.
Yeah, it's.
No, it's public meeting. It's a Brown Act meeting, so.
Okay.
But, um, you know, I would, I wouldn't caution you to even do that, to even have a third member sitting there, just because, um.
Right, it's different when we're going to somebody else's meeting. We can all go to somebody else's meeting, but it becomes a little more awkward, I know, when.
Right, but, uh, committee, committee is actually gonna be making recommendations, taking action.
Right.
On this, even though it's gonna be the council that adopts it, but if you've got three council members sitting there and they're all shaking their head yes or shaking no, then, you know, you, you're formed a consensus that.
Yeah.
No, I'm not sure we'll get a report from you guys, when you.
Yeah, it's, it's coming. Trust me. Alright, so let's, so now that we've gone down the list, let's go down to Dias. Uh, who wants to start with, uh, other activities? Let's start, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, yeah, it was, it was, um, a lighter month, obviously, cause it was December, but we had the Chamber Christmas Parade. Um, most recently, I attended the, uh, groundbreaking at Yellen over in Juan's District for the shade structures. That was very well-attended and, and, uh, it's great to see that Juan fought for something that he was very passionate about and it paid off. I think that it sets a good example and I think it was impressive, uh, that he was able to get that done for his, uh, for his district. And, uh, Chamber Luncheon today, where Steve spoke, a couple of rare things, nothing too crazy. It was, it was a lighter month because of December. Um, anything else from you guys?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Loa?
Well, um, see, yesterday you and I attended the, um, ribbon cutting for the World Food.
Right.
And, uh, I thought that was great. It's a, it's a neat little store. It's got all kinds of different, uh, foods. Um, it's over in front of, um, Burlington?
It's over near Burlington, kinda next door or across the street, yeah, by the Sears outlets, across the street from the, uh, mall entrance, kinda where the gas station is there. Uh, if you know where the Oshinoi is, just, uh, just the other side of freeway.
Yeah, interesting place and, uh, it filled a vacancy. I think that place was vacant for quite a while, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it was the three-day foring place.
Was it for a while?
I think so.
Yeah, so, in any event, that's something that, uh, is good to see, business coming into the, uh, city. Um, not a whole lot to report. It's been busy, but, uh, with other, uh, with other matters.
Yeah, it was a nice restaurant, mostly Mediterranean groceries, when I gather. Very specialty items, good stuff.
If you can't read Russian or Armenian, so.
Yeah.
And this is some of the, some of the, they have some pretty unique, uh, vegetables and things over there, but they have grape leaves, so they are, they do that. So.
And I did attend the, um, Hispanic Chamber Commerce Luncheon today, where you spoke and, uh, very, very well-received. Uh, very comprehensive comments by you. I heard good comments afterwards.
I had to run. Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Bishop?
I'll, I'll go next again with December being a late month because of the holidays. Uh, but, uh, the Yellen, uh, groundbreaking, really, uh, great attendance, I thought. Uh, I know some of the council members couldn't attend and they, they told me the reasons why and I do understand that. Um, thank you all for working on that project and for the support from the council. As Mayor Let, as Mayor Hubauer said, it is not a big deal, but it really is a big deal. Uh, because now we're gonna be able to enjoy more of our park experience, being under the shade. I know it's December, it's the winter, it's cold, but come summer, they'll be ready. Um, thanks for all the hard work the staff did and the support from the council. Um, just looking forward to a great new year. That's, that's it for me.
Yeah, it was pretty uneventful for, for me also. Um, we all did the, the workshop that Marcia was talking about and I attended the, uh, Veterans Breakfast on Christmas morning, so that we brought a little good bags.
Just missed you guys. We showed up there. I did the old guy thing and went out to breakfast that morning and I found out you guys had just left.
Yeah, yeah. So mostly it was just the socializing with the groups and the community and constituents and wishing everybody happy holiday and spreading good cheer. So, that was it.
Great, well, um, so, uh, like most of you, I went to the parades. Uh, we went out there, we used the spoon to do the groundbreaking at the Yellen Park.
That's cool.
Um, the Brightline Tour, um, Mr. Bishop, you were on that with me, weren't you, sir?
Yes, I was.
And, uh, uh, the city manager was there. Um, again, folks, um, this was amazing. You guys have gotta take a look at, uh, what Brightline is doing back in, uh, in, um, in Florida, the running that train. It's a really first-class experience. It's like arriving at a hotel when you get to those train stations. It's not like arriving at a train station or a bus station. It's amazing. Uh, the trains themselves are, are, are very nice. Their first class is not that much more, but they have like an airline service that comes down the aisles and takes care of you. Uh, we learned a lot. We, uh, were able to provide a lot of good information back to the, uh, operators back there. Um, they weren't aware of all the new engineers and new jobs up here. They were very impressed with that. And we let them know that we're standing ready, willing and able to do what we have to do to help them make that, uh, other jump from Victorville to here. Because with one team in Vegas and two teams in LA, we're the connection, so.
Yeah, that was, that was a great trip. We learned a lot and we saw the promise that, that rail has, the technology, the class and the quality that they're trying to bring. It's just not, uh, it's not like an economy rail. They're bringing luxury and class.
And even, and even their standard rate is amazing as well. Their standard, um, ticket, you know, it's still, again, you still feel like you're going into a, uh,
Like an airport.
Or a, or a, or a JW Marriott or something when you're going into their, their stations and, and you walk right through. TSA could learn a thing or three from these guys.
That was gonna be my question.
You zip right through that security. They, they have this, this high-security screening system, everything and everybody is screened. And it's, uh, there's no, you're not clogged up at the gate, you're not having to take off your shoes. It was, it was impressive.
Yeah, it was and with the Virgin Partnership, it's gonna be exciting to see how fast this thing takes off. It, it really is.
So I also, uh, attended the, uh, installation up at, uh, Antelope Valley Healthcare District. Uh, I was asked to come swearing in my friend and, uh, personal physician, Dr. Barazzo. And, uh, that was, uh, that was a nice, uh, nice little shindig they did. Uh, they had the AV Board of Trade Breakfast. Uh, there's always some good information coming out of that. And, uh, the, um, um, the relationship there, I think, is improving. Uh, and I wanna thank Mike and the, uh, Curtis and the guys over at Economic Development for their participation over there. That's really helping, um, uh, with the, um, regional partnerships and the regional outreach, so, so. But, uh, and then, uh, I, uh, had the opportunity to, uh, spend a little time with our new, uh, sheriff. We had gone to the sheriff's, uh, um, swearing-in ceremony and then the Contract Cities Association had a, uh, a reception downtown. And, uh, the, uh, in-between other meetings, I was able to dash down there, have a, have a chat with the sheriff and, uh, talk to him about, uh, our staffing issues, uh, and our needs here, uh, our partnerships with him, uh, about some other law enforcement concepts that are being proposed and how we can, uh, how, how can, how can we all do a better job? Because there's some pretty amazing numbers about to come out, so, uh, and there was a whole lot of other. Man, I had about a billion meetings this month. I don't wanna bore you with all those, so, but, uh, anything else, Mr. City Manager? It's your turn. Thank you. Next?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Jim, now. Seriously.
No, fine, I, uh, I don't have anything else to add to that. I think, uh, uh, we had a, a great.
What did we miss on the Brightline that Austin and I missed? Other than the grapefruit spray?
There's, there's one more thing I wanted out on Brightline, sorry to interrupt. It's, one, one, one thing I definitely learned when I was there is that it's just not a high-speed rail company. It's, it's a high-speed rail company that's centered around real estate development, which is a big part of it and the funding mechanism. When you go in there, there's shops, there's kiosks, there's rental stations. And, and when they bring the rail, they plan to build and develop around it because that's gonna be a key component. So when that, when that rail does come, it's gonna bring the economic development with it. And, and I think that's the big component of how they're able to offer the rides at the price that they're doing.
It was amazing when you saw the, the before and after pictures of that dumpy neighborhood, that they built that thing in and they, they have these office, Class A office towers there and are getting ready to build a super tower there, so, yeah.
So the whole idea is, is that, that the development and, uh, the rail kinda go side by side and, and one feeds the other. And it was impressive and I'm really looking forward to some of that coming here in our city.
What did we miss on that, Jim?
I think a couple of things. So our Transit Oriented Development Workshop, we'll dive into that. That's what we've been really working on for the past several years. Um, first with California High-Speed Rail and now with this project adding to it. Uh, I'd say the one thing that, uh, the other experience that the council didn't have, but one of our staff flew into Fort Lauderdale, took an Uber from Fort Lauderdale, it took an hour and forty minutes to get down to Miami and about sixty dollars on the Uber. And then going back, he took the train back to Fort Lauderdale, the, the Brightline train. It took twenty minutes. It was, I think it was a twenty-five dollar fare to go on the train and, and sip champagne on the way back.
Not, not a bad ride, was it?
I do have one question, um, for those of you that attended the KB Hill meeting, did, did anything productive come out of that? I wasn't able to go cause I had to work, so.
Well, I was, uh, I kinda got the last-minute call on that thing. I gotta thank the staff for helping us throw together the, uh, material and, and, and the venue on that. Uh, Mr. Loa and, uh, Mr. Creo were in the audience as well. Um, the, uh, Congresswoman staff, uh, um, I was, I was up there with them. I think that once you got past some of the, uh, I think that once you got past some of the uh, um, s- some some of what. We all kind of expected with some of the uh, the rhetorical, you know, uh, uh, politics that. Um, that that it that it kinda lent itself to. Once we got down to it, I think the basic uh um message was. There's a whole lot that we're all agreeing on and we're spending way too much time arguing about the stuff that we don't agree on. And we and we've got people out there that are being forced to work with no pay at a lot of these federal jobs. And that we're having a lot of uh, some of these guys are had leaves canceled, medical leaves canceled, things like that. It was uh, we had um.
You guys didn't talk about anything directly affecting City Palmdale?
Yeah, there was a good presentation. I can give you a copy of uh of the of the notes that that I had presented. And Mister, uh, could could you distribute that to the balance of the council so I don't get in trouble with the uh city attorney here?
Yeah, I can I can put that information out to the council. Uh, it was something we put together about a week ago. Uh, in preparation to give Congresswoman Hill some talking points when she was back in Washington. Uh, and we're adding to that as we go in regard to impacts on s- local small business and so forth, because the the impacts. As the government stays shut down, are gonna be exponential. They're they're just now starting off. Most people can hold out a few weeks. After that, uh, it starts to go go bad really quickly. And so we'll we'll get some more information on that.
So, it was uh, and some some somebody, I don't know whether Hills off, somebody was live streaming it, so.
So it's online somewhere?
S- somewhere. I'm not sure where, but some.
The whole thing was on Facebook.
So.
On Facebook?
Yeah, it's on Facebook.
Yeah, so I I I think Hill's staff, somebody somebody was there, had something going. There were a bunch of cameras and things like that, but uh. But um, it was um, uh, the Association of Federal Government Employees was there, the uh. The uh gentleman representing the uh federal peace officers out at the uh, uh, the prison uh was there. We had the gentleman from National Park Service was there as well, so each of us had a couple of minutes, but it was primarily was it was a. It was Katie's opportunity, Congresswoman Hill's opportunity to um, to visit the district. Cuz she just got sworn in and uh to kinda meet and say, here, here's who are you guys seeing that's happening? People asked a few questions, so it was, I thought I thought it was, I thought it was good. Thought it was good, so. Alright, City Attorney, do you have anything else uh to add today?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, nice hat, by the way. I I missed out on it. I just got a little tiny dot, so, yeah. Alright, so I'd like to thank everybody for being here. We are gonna adjourn to February fifth, Marsha.
Council request.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other, any other items? Slip right through, almost got it, almost got it. Anybody have anything that uh they wanna bring up for uh, uh, to get on the city manager's radar here?
Uh, do you have anybody else or something?
I've I've got a, I've got one. Um, I handed off a book to uh our city manager today. About uh phasing into a no-kill shelter or a partnership with um an animal rescue group. I know we've had a workshop on this a few months back, but I know as our contract comes up with uh. Animal services, I wanna take a look at what we can do to start phasing into this, cuz if those the prices don't come down or we can't control the cost of this thing. We gotta be proactive rather than reactive, especially uh going into the next couple of years. Financially, we're gonna have to be as uh wise as we can.
As much as we love the volunteers here, the the bureaucrats are kinda driving us all nuts. They, um, I I had missed the workshop. Um, when they came in, but I understand it wasn't a whole lot of dialogue.
Not so much.
Yeah, but they they gave quite a bit of uh feedback uh at the Contract Cities meeting, which is probably why they didn't say a whole lot when they came here. And it uh, uh, it it didn't go over well and uh, I mean, most most communities are looking at getting their rates tripled. Uh, and uh, they're, it's it's not a good scenario and I agree. We need to talk with ASPCA. We need to try to get the other rescue groups coordinated. I think we need to ask them for that property that's next door back.
Yeah.
So we can do something with that property, because they don't, they don't have the money to do anything with it. It's just gonna sit there as a dirt lot, so I don't see why we don't do something with it.
And I've uh, I've I've located a consultant that's worked with numerous other cities that's helped them transition into their own thing and shown that it's been not only beneficial to the animals. But also.
Get it to him and let's.
I handed it off to him to tonight.
Perfect.
For me, I wanted to uh make a suggestion. Um, I I think that it would be a great idea to have a council retreat. Um, something that I think would be very beneficial. I I say that because when I was at the school district, we did a couple of retreats. And we actually um did it at a location where there was an interest at for the district at the time. For instance, we went over to the Oakland area to look at uh some school facilities where they are having, they they were introducing. Kind of a new uh technology and new uh furniture for the kids to learn, to make them be more pers- participated. Participate more in 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 the classroom. So by having those kind of new furniture, the kids are able to move around. Maybe something for us, I don't know, we said a smart city, uh, since we're uh working on that.
Your problem is, you know, I looked into that when I was looking at running and the issue is is that, that the changes in the state law. Can't have that outside of the jurisdiction.
Then.
You could go to conferences, you could do something like that, but so it would just end up being a like another workshop or something like that, so.
Be a workshop, that's a good idea.
So, I mean, that.
We don't have to call it a retreat. We can do it a workshop. But I think that that will uh facilitate um the council's dynamics, um, being able to look at something that we are working on. Uh, physically looking at it, um, and Councilman Bet- Bettencourt. Even suggested that we have a group uh picture, a council picture, uh, four or five of us. Uh, instead of having the individual pictures, maybe have uh one for the entire council. Uh, I think that that'll be something uh new. I appreciate the fact that you're having us be part of the the recognition.
But if you take a look, the picture situations are changing.
That changed, I know that you're lineup.
If you look at the other facilities.
I do appreciate that as well.
Uh, maybe for some of the other satellite facilities, it could be a.
Group picture.
Do a little, could we have a little fireplace going there? We could have some marshmallows. Oh, no.
So, so again, it doesn't have to be a retreat. If there is some uh a workshop, uh, scheduled, as I said, there is nothing wrong with that. I'm I'm not familiar with the issues you're talking about.
Yeah, it's the the some of the places gotten in a jam over that thing, so.
Well, we we never do, so anyway.
Maybe maybe uh the city attorney and the city manager can look at that and then we can uh individually have those discussions and they can work something off along those lines, just like.
Yeah, I was gonna say that the rules they change them every year, it seems like on on Brownad, the meetings and things like that. So, you can take a closer look.
Why don't you take a look at it and get back to us now?
To the state of the art and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Find out what it is this week.
Uh, that's that's what I had.
One thing to play off that, which I think could be beneficial, and I've seen other cities do this before, is a a workshop for a roundtable discussion with us, the council. And all the department heads.
Or the planning commission too.
Or the planning commission, so we can, we can get, we can hear from them in an open forum discussion what uh.
Yeah.
What their issues are, or they could use some more help or or where they could do better, I think.
Just just so you guys know, and uh I know the ci- the city manager, uh, I kind of alluded to this to him. I'm trying to make a point to stop in at each of the different board meetings that that are going on. And then the different school boards and different agencies that are out here. Um, I uh I've got, I put calls in right after the election uh to the supervisor's office, to Santa Clarita and Lancaster. I already had a meeting uh uh with the with Lancaster and I'm waiting for the meeting with uh. Um, with the supervisor's office, still trying to uh get that coordinated with her schedule. And I'm um, um, uh likewise working on coordinating that schedule with uh Marsha down there in uh Santa Clarita. So, just to kinda find out what a lot of these things, the problems aren't stopping at Avenue M or Aguado State, so. Ms. Bettencourt, do you have anything you wanna add for this evening? Other than our photo, I think it's a good idea. I like that idea, so. Okay? Alright, so we'll go ahead. We're gonna adjourn. I can go now to number fifteen?
I'm good.
Uh, we're gonna adjourn to uh February fifth, seven o'clock. Uh, we're not, no closed session, sir? Are we, are we gonna do that till five o'clock, Mister uh City Attorney?
We stay and do it to five.
Yes.
Closed session at five? So we're actually gonna adjourn to five o'clock on February fifth. Okay? We all good?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.